Anything else?
Sounds good.
Oh, I appreciate it, Jason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Coster.
They're not here yet. I don't expect either of them until closer to three.
Okay. Sounds good.
But you have Rodney.
Right, so I was just saying.
Ready?
I would move Rodney up to the chair.
If you don't mind, do it early.
No, I'd like to. Hey, Rodney. Morning, afternoon, I guess it is now. Just had a feeling I wanted to ask by you, the service agreement that we had on one of your motor graders, that Virginia ninety-five has come up for renewal. I've got a proposal here in hand, I sent it to all of you via email. It's basically the same agreement that we had before. We've just renewed it, updated the pricing, and will go again for another six thousand hours. Now, this contract is, if you decide to sell the machine, trade it, whatever, there's no penalty, just end the contract, so early out or any penalties or any kind. It's just an agreement with an upfront price for per hour that we service the machine as long as it's under contract. And this is just a renewal. This is something that Mike has been doing with all these machines and seems to be working pretty good. I think he's happy with it and like to continue it. That's kind of where I'm at this morning or today. Again, it's just an update of what we've been doing and is continuing the process on for the next few years. Till you guys decide to do something.
Which unit was this on again?
Ninety-five.
You know when we started, was this a?
We started when it was new.
I know, with, with.
We're at twelve thousand.
One of the first ones we bought at that time under.
Yes, I believe it was the first twelve M two machine. It was one of the first ones anyway. I think there was three of them and they, this is the highest hour, the next two are about.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's probably got most jobs on it.
Yeah, it's got about two thousand hours more than the other two on it, so.
You didn't want to buy it back and trade it straight up for renewal?
That's optional up to you guys, I'd be glad to send Archie over if that's what you want to do.
Because that one's probably getting, like, six years old.
It's, yeah, it's, I don't have the model year here in front of me, but it's got twelve thousand hours on it, so it's about twelve hundred hours a year, so, yes, probably about ten years old. So, somewhere eight to ten anyway. So that was the other thing too, that Mike and I talked about is, you know, we can look at this, whether you decide to trade the machine in the next year or something, or put it in your budget, that's fine. We will update this today, it'll continue to get serviced until you trade. Again, there's no penalty, when we trade this, we just end the contract, it's all amounts to. Okay?
I don't want to get back into the best where we were aged out at like twenty to fifteen years on equipment.
Sure.
Our graders are going to see the most hours of any of our equipment, probably.
This is the one that I think, and we've talked a little bit, that you want to look at in the next year.
Right.
As to whether we're going to trade back in, rebuild it, or upgrade to new, whatever we're gonna do.
He's getting there, Rodney.
And we're at twelve thousand hours now, so your window of trade or upgrade is going to be here in the next, probably two years, one to two years, so next couple thousand hours. Because that's the timeframe when we're typically expecting, you know, major components are getting to the end of their life cycle. They're going to need to be rebuilt, or we're going to have a major failure at that point, so we don't do something. But again, what I'm here for today is just continuing the maintenance agreement, like what we've been doing on the machine.
One thing that I might add, and this has been brought up in the past, is this service agreement, I feel, and I believe Foley agrees with this, it adds value to the machine when we go to trade it in, because they have done all the service work since day one on this machine. So, no question about whether there was the wrong oil, or filters, or anything like that you saw on the machine, it was all done by certified CAT mechanics.
Correct. We have all that history, all of the service reports and everything, that then we can pass on to the next customer, which makes it very valuable to that next customer. They like to be able to see that history and what, how the machine's been taken care of. Absolutely.
I think Archie's sort of used trade them straight up for, like, just for him or Archie.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think that's what Archie said.
You're gonna have to talk to him about that, I'm gonna defer to him on that one.
I wouldn't be opposed to approving this, we'd go ahead and look at a possible trade up.
Yeah. I told Mike, I plan on getting out and inspecting this machine, at least giving him a budget price on rebuilding it, and I'm gonna talk to Archie, and he'll do the same as far as getting a budget price for trade in to new, for new upgrade also.
Do we know how much we still owe on this, as far as our? Well, you want all of it?
I'm guessing this one might be paid off.
This will, yeah, this is.
I thought, I didn't think we had any of it paid off.
It's over.
Yeah, it's, they weren't leased out for that long.
I think it was like seventy-five hundred hours or something originally.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good.
Six of them now.
Okay.
Both up on last year, so.
Okay, good. It's actually not paid off. It's not paid off, we owe fifty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy five cents on this one. And it's a. What time of the year on here? It's a twenty-fourteen, a twelve M two model. So we're almost there. The original contract balance was two hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Fifty-six. This is something after last year's autumn period, the older ones was down twenty-two and twenty-five. That was without paying, it was last year, so. I'm sure this is the current cross right, and the auto balance is what they were of last year's audit.
Right.
Okay. I missed, all I need is a signature for you deciding to do this, okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
Do you have the original? I'll move that we renew the quarterly maintenance plan on unit number ninety-five, which is a model twelve M two grader. As presented by Foley.
Same.
All second of motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass this three zero.
Hey, Rodney. Is that the one you sent me Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Second page, initial on the third, and then the very last page. Can I leave my copy, please?
Yes, please. If you're leaving right away, do you mind running it to the clerk's office?
Oh.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mike, do you have anything else that I need to?
I don't believe we do right now, okay?
Thank you, Rodney, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Rodney.
We'll see you again sometime soon, probably.
All right.
I'll tell Archie to start dropping this. Thank you, Rodney. Thank you.
Yeah. Jennifer with Casa.
Jennifer out there?
Yeah, they're coming.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Hi, ladies.
How are you doing?
Yeah, I'm good. All right.
You're welcome to take your mask off if you feel comfortable, it's up to you.
I'm Donnie DeGarr, I'm with the Child Advocacy Center of Hope Unlimited in Iowa, and we serve this county as well. We interview kids who have been sexually, physically abused, and help them through the court process.
And I'm Amy Daniels from Court appointed Special Advocates. Our main office is in Iowa, but we also have a satellite office in Chanute, and we serve four counties. We train people from the community to advocate for children that are being taken out of our houses, being abused or neglected, and then are put into foster care through the court system.
And we are here today to ask you guys to declare April Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Every April, we ask the counties that we serve to honor children and to help us prevent child abuse. And so we do many activities, one of them is do the proclamation signings, and we love doing these, this is a great way for people to learn about what we do. And we also do a coloring contest with the kids K through third grade, where we have a pinwheel that we ask them to color, and we have celebrity judging, and we have prizes for those kids, and we try to make sure we get them as involved as possible. And so this year, we know that the pandemic has kind of, they put us off our activities last year, but this year we're really happy to be back.
We came down the other night and met with the city of Erie and installed the pinwheel garden in front of the courthouse, that's also an activity that we do.
See how this came in?
You see, yeah.
Yeah, I know Commissioner Gail Moore was really displeased because we put him out there a few years ago. Had your commissioners go out there and put the.
Always a joy to have you.
He was really upset about that.
Yeah, we just happened to get a meeting with the city before this one, so they had to put him in that evening.
All right. All right, great.
We do pinwheel gardens in each county and then several cities as well, just to kind of spread it out.
It's a good thing we didn't have umbrellas, because I think we were blown away the last couple days.
And that's true.
Feel a little dicey.
The pinwheel gardens are a federal project, which is hosted in Kansas by Kansas Children's Service League, which is the oldest agency in the state that deals with children, it's over a hundred years old, which is phenomenal. And they do a lot with child prevention, or child abuse prevention, and adoption, quite a lot. So they brought the project to Kansas, and we hosted in these counties by doing the pinwheel plantings. And the pinwheel plantings do not symbolize how many children are in custody, but rather, as a garden, it simulates the growth of children within a community, and then it takes a whole village to raise a child.
And what we have noticed over the last year during the pandemic is that child abuse reports are actually down. We do know that it's happening, but we also know that kids weren't in school the last few months of school last year, and I think there's not as many eyes on, and so despite the decrease in the amount of reports, we know that it's happening. We just want to encourage people to, you know, report if they see something going on, so.
Along with the coloring contest, we have a very basic statement to children in kindergarten through third grade, and that is, if you're being hurt, or if you know someone who is being hurt, it's not right to hurt a child, and you need to tell the trust that you know that. After we do the pinwheel contest, which is going on right now, we'll bring the pictures from the Erie School to the courthouse and hang them in the bottom of the windows, so everybody can see them. And then at the end of April, children are encouraged to come and get their pictures of them on. Do you have any questions?
Do you have proclamations?
I do, I do, I actually brought three copies if you don't mind, so Hope Unlimited can have one, and you can have one, Kelly can have one, and Casa can have one, we actually hang them in our offices for child abuse prevention.
You didn't bring the judge with you this time.
No, no, he was busy.
Tiny wise. You put the pinwheels out there.
We actually did pinwheels with this, again, this morning in Iowa, we met with the county out there this morning. It's getting worn out.
It's always fun to bring the judge.
Best judges I know that likes to get involved in all kinds of stuff.
What's fun about the coloring contest, we actually do have Judge Rogers, and Judge Kreig usually participates in, being celebrity judges, so it's a lot of fun to get that little bit of the outside, you know, to visit with them.
We actually do one of the judgings in Chanute, we have to use that entire gym at the right side.
Really?
Wall to wall, because there's four thousand children.
It's impressive, and very, very colorful.
It's really beautiful, yeah, all laid out on tables.
I'll motion to approve the issue properly.
Just one statement here, I have been an advocate with this group for about eight years, and it's one of the most difficult things I've done in my life. It is very hard to deal with these children, and I know Seth has been involved too. It's very needed, and so if anyone's ever interested, they're always looking for new advocates, so.
We are, we are, in fact, we're going to train right after our golf tournament, which is on Father's Day in June, and then we'll be starting a training class, if anyone's interested in joining us.
Great. So we'll make motion to approve April twenty-twenty-one as now the future county, child abuse prevention month.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for hosting us, I know you've had a lot on your agenda today.
Well.
Time changes.
Thank you.
It's always nice to see you, and thank you for hosting.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, you guys do a good job.
Thank you, guys, have a great day.
Appreciate it.
Are you two big hurry for a picture?
Oh, yeah.
Can we get a picture?
Take as little time as possible.
All right, we just, we have somebody take it.
It's a good sign. It's a good sign.
Seth, you should come over here.
I got a good sign.
Seth, you should come over here and get it.
I didn't reply to anything, you guys gave a fuck.
Fairly close, because we're probably.
Come on over, ladies.
Oh, well, thank you.
Seth, you didn't want in here?
Maybe, thank you.
Okay, I took several.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Guys, we really appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
Playing pinwheels, they will be, you know, doing it during their time. You're really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ladies, have a good one.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Lori's not here, maybe Lori's not coming.
Sheriff.
Thank you.
I just got the heat on the bar, it's like.
Thank you.
Lori Natalie's not going to be able to make it.
Okay. Okay, so. Scratch the executive, and just okay, her vacation?
Yeah, her vacation's in the consent agenda. Okay. You want to do that now?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. You know Sheriff, Taylor's a busy man. You don't want to detain him too much.
Good afternoon, everyone, I asked Greg if he could be here this afternoon to comment on the use of the River Bridge on Elk Road north of Chanute. Mr. Weber with Monarch Cement has been working with Kenny Blair with CFS, who's also our engineer, on reposting that thing to the operating weight, rather than the inventory weight. The inventory weight is a lower rating, which is now eight tons. If they posted it the operating weight, which will be slightly higher, not a lot higher, but it would allow empty semis to come across it. And I discussed this with Greg a little bit, feel free to chime in anytime, Greg, with that.
Okay, I'm sorry, is this the one?
This is the River, the River Bridge.
The River Bridge, okay.
On Elk Road north of Ash Grove, in Ash Grove. Greg's concern is, if we do this, they're not going to have any way of knowing
Sure.
whether these trucks are loaded or unloaded. They don't have scales, nor do they have a place to set up scales, so this is going to be a real problem for enforcement, and feel free to just.
The reason the two thousand fifteen resolutions were the way it is, we don't have anybody trained, or we don't have scales, we don't. So I think the commission back then opted for sixteen dollars, that way the deputy can look at their registration and see what they're registered for, rather than what they actually weigh. So.
I'm with you on that, I just, I have a little concern on.
It would be difficult for us to enforce changing that.
It's been like five years since this was last inspected.
No, it gets inspected every.
Well, it does.
Yeah, but every two years.
We changed the weight. What year was it?
It's been eight tons since I've been here, that's five years, so. But the problem we have here, I think the commission, this was before you came on board again, is I think we kind of made a commitment to Ash Grove to allow them to do this. We didn't vote on it, but.
I thought that they were going to use Plummer, that we were going to beat up that bridge and let them use Plummer.
But they were going to use the Elk Road River Bridge empty, and then come down Plummer loaded. Yeah. And their solution to come down Plummer loaded would be to lower the speed limit, either shore that bridge up that's above their haul road, the Ash Grove haul road, or drop the speed limit to twenty mile an hour as the truck's crossing it, which Kenny says that will, it will hold them, it will be fine. Now, he's going to be here next week, we have another meeting next Tuesday, correct?
No, the thirteenth.
It's the thirteenth.
We're back on our regular schedule.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I thought he, did he call and get on the agenda?
Who?
Kenny Blair, CFS?
No, I haven't talked to him.
Okay. Well, I'll have to talk to him about that, because he.
So Greg, what do you think the solution is?
We're a little like a dog in the fight, other than enforce this, to enforce the truck traffic over that bridge, so if you change that ordinance, it's about going to have to be off the registration for us to do it, instead of like K dot, or KHP, when they have the truck checkers and actually have scales, and see what somebody weighs.
So do we currently have a resolution on that bridge? I guess I haven't seen.
Yes.
It's, it's. It's our hash fifty-nine, and just decided, we, I think we wrote five tickets for that last weekend, one day alone. I know the deputies have helped back up, I think, three trucks in the last couple of weeks, up and around that corner. Which, why they're overturning off there, I don't know, there's plenty of signage on one sixty-nine knot to go down that road, but they still are.
I'm more concerned with the safety of that bridge, because I remember all the pictures and videos and the structure, the structure itself, so. It's kind of having Kenny, I mean, he's the one that did the first recommendation of putting it that way, so we could post a weight.
Well, and he can do a better job of explaining what the inventory rating versus the operating rating, if I remember him correctly, the inventory rating was theoretically, if we never had anything across that bridge greater than eight tons, that bridge should last us a long, long time. If you bump it up to the operating rating, then it's going to be detrimental to the bridge over time, and, you know, the cost of replacing that particular bridge is somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six million dollars. So, we need to make it last as long as we can, and I think the commission was just trying to find a balance of looking after the county roads, and also trying to help the folks at Monarch Cement also, and Ash Grove. But we sure don't want to see that, that bridge in the bottom of the river either. So.
As you know, it is designed like the one in Minnesota, so that ended up in the bottom of the river.
I mean, I'm confident in Kenny's assessment on if it was just empty semis going across there, I think we'd probably find, Greg's dilemma is, they have no way of knowing.
You can't look inside the trailer, right?
Yeah, I mean, those are enclosed, they're tanker trailers, they're hauling dry powder cement, and so they're enclosed, you can't, oh, you could look in, they're not going to do that.
Well, that's what I did before work, you could bang on the side of it, you know it was empty, but you're still not going to know what it scaled out at, and you don't know what the tractor's going to weigh full of fuel, or, so without scales, it'd be hard to write a resolution if it didn't go off the registration weight for us to enforce.
But after seeing the traffic through the last two weeks, I don't know how you control anything. I mean, there's trucks everywhere. So I just think trucks are going to be using that if we don't, I mean, we need to discourage it as much as possible.
Hopefully in two weeks they can go west.
Yes.
By what Wayne said earlier in the week. But, I watched one drive right up north Santa Fe this morning, but had turned, made the turn to go back to Ram, and hit the highway, because they didn't follow the curve around.
Yeah, it's, it's just crazy. Stand up there on Twenty-first and Plummer, about ten minutes is all they made. So, I mean.
The other road we have to worry about is now Country Cut Road.
Right.
That is another.
And I've asked Seth to draft a resolution to post that for no through trucks.
Because I have had several complaints on Country Cut Road.
Oh, yeah, that's not the best road in the county, for weight.
And, yeah.
It's just not going to last.
It's already breaking through uncoordinated. It's going to look strange, that resolution will look strange because of how, how the city versus the county works over there.
City's already acting on something. What's in there has, have they not?
Have they?
I think, I thought.
What is Main Street to?
No, it's chopped in and out, it's wherever the city sewer went, that came in the city, it's.
It looks like, it looks like a Tetris.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whoever took the city sewer usually came into the city. But for enforcement reasons, I think we have to make it as easy as possible. But for enforcement reasons, I think we have to make it as easy as possible and hopefully deter the truck traffic. Till we have Kenny down here to give us some extra reassurance.
So do we need to change the resolution or pass a new one or just keep the one that we have?
I mean, if they're actually gonna allow them to drive across that bridge so that we're not enforcing something.
I would think for now just leave things alone, right? Because we don't have the signage that Kenny's proposing anyway.
As I've heard, we're citing everybody that's already crossed it that's over sixty pounds.
Sounds good to me.
He was, his proposal's gonna include the signage, which will have the three trucks with different weights beside each truck that's on the side.
If they look at those pictures of when we drive our truck across that bridge. I avoid that road quite bravely to go around it, so...
All right. I guess we'll probably need to visit that again then at some point.
Leave it as it is.
Yeah.
I thank you for coming in. I just felt it was important to get Greg.
Thanks for pulling up there too.
Well, we can't understand this sheriff either as far as enforcement, maybe it is like more difficult to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The weight limit, it turns the registration on the weight limits a lot easier for us to enforce trying to scale the trucks.
Busing issue. They have the, the grayhound, is it still across? You know, they used, they were going around and coming back in, so I knew that was an issue back several years ago. It was, we kinda had to move them around so they weren't crossing. That bus would be pushing weight on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure.
Might make it through this.
Does it right on time?
Hello, how's everyone?
Doing great.
So, I'm Todd, the state manager for State of the Union, and I brought Susan from the state. She's director of planning and development. She does all our grants and stuff like that, so... I just want to thank you guys who've come over. I know this has been a hot topic for several months, especially since I came on board. Had a couple conversations with county. So we've been working on it hard. Susan brought a great project in front of the state commission last meeting, so we wanted to bring it to you guys for a co-sponsorship on the project. This Twenty First and Plummer is the project we're discussing. That road's in desperate need of repair, I think we could all agree on. So we've got a cost share program that Susan will discuss a little bit. Right now, we're just in the preliminary stages of design. We've got a special call meeting next Monday for the commission for final approval before the deadline of April ninth. So it's kinda fast tracking, but we feel like this is our best opportunity to get the project done just because of the low dollar cost. So I'll hand it over to Susan and answer any questions later.
And while we're at it, sorry Todd.
Yeah.
I'd like to introduce you to our county engineer.
Okay.
Not for sure, sorry. This is William Cook and I invited him to kind of see what the project was all about. And he's the one that would be coordinating things with us or any questions that you might have on those roads and stuff, hopefully in the future.
Yeah, so we're in the very early stages of it. There's gonna be a lot of steps as we go forward. As you know, I think you've done a cost share program before, but the city are very, so you're not familiar with it, so... So again, that's all there is, Susan.
Yeah, so I'd like a whole lot more to add, Karen. If you're familiar with the cost share program and you kinda know how it works, the reason why we kinda threw this together quickly before you guys is because they did receive some additional CARES Act money, which kind of helped put the odds a little bit better for everybody. They've got twenty-five million. They relaxed the matching funds to ten percent and released the restrictions on the maximum amount you can request. So because the project has those surface road issues as long as, as well as an economic development aspect, it fits really well with the cost share program. It should rate really well. But because you guys are the owner, they do require the county to be the co-sponsor of the application. So that's why we're here for you. Now, I will tell you that although Todd is not asking for any money for the project for the rating of it, it does help if you would throw some money at it, but we are not asking for it. I just wanted to let you guys know that. And if you guys have any questions about the funding part of it, I'm happy to answer it. They did do April in mind, so that's why we're here before you today.
Does choose a grant, it's cuffed. Is there a deadline when the project has to be done or...
They don't have a deadline for construction completion, so the, they award typically in late May, early June. They usually give you through the end of the year to finish design, get it out to bid. They like to see construction started within a year and then completed the following year. That's generally what you shoot for. They don't have any hard and fast deadlines though. So it's whatever you can put together as quickly as you can.
And the reason for the special call meeting Monday night is we made some changes. Originally, the project we presented was just for, it had no land acquisition. It was just originally fixed the road that's existing there, was just, let's fix it. Commission wanted the traffic signal, so that's the reason that this is kinda expanded for a special call meeting. So we've looked into it, changed the price a little bit, roughly five hundred forty thousand when we first presented it. Now it's about seven hundred eighty thousand with a city share of two hundred eighty-two.
Just under two fifty.
So that'll go back in front of the commission for their approval. But right now, it's showing four stoplights, I believe on your guys' four poles with stoplights. We're trying to narrow down to two poles for the four stoplights, so we're not, and everyone's already around the corner. I know that's gonna be a hot discussion, but that's kinda where we're at until the commission gives us the air name next Monday.
Most of your costs are gonna be in the utility.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was gonna bring up.
So we've got, we've got three phases to this project. This is the first one. The second and third one has major utility. Easements and whatnot that we're gonna have to look at. One is the gas regulator regulator threat there on Twenty First and Plummer. And then obviously, as we go further to Thirty Fifth, which has been a project for the last two to three years on Twenty First and Plummer Board, was actually still existent. They were looking at the overall project itself. And that's when the electric and all that came in. I think the overall project at that point was like eight million when it was previously presented two years ago, I think, when that board was together.
I think it was even longer than that because it was back...
Yeah, it was probably, it may have been...
Lady Lester stuff we meant years ago about trying to expand that, so... But I'm for it because that, that road needs a lot of improvements, so...
And Susan has sent out letters to all the businesses in town. We've been getting all the good feedback for them to get their blessing as well and write letters and approval of the project, so...
Yeah, we've gotten positive feedback so far. We got a call from Virgil Pack yesterday. He's gonna be submitting a letter of support as well. So, so far, everybody's in favor of it that we talked to.
So, I mean, yeah, any improvements there, but I think this is just the beginning. There are some major problems out there and I know before it's been because there's two ownerships out there. You know, we own the roads and then part of its city. And, I mean, a lot of that needs to be taken care of. And I think, in my opinion, that the county is ready to see this as a city project. And at some point, I think we need to figure out how we can, you know, allow this to be city again, even though I know your land around there isn't annexed.
Yeah.
So those are some of the questions.
When you go into the twenty acres of annexation, who's gonna be willing to do it for twenty acres to be annexed in?
Yes. So, and I think through this process that no one's really talked to the landowners at this intersection. So I was out there the other night and visited with them. So I know this has been years long. So they still have questions too, that they want to see improvements just as much as anyone. The stoplights could be a little bit troublesome. If the driveways are really close to the intersection, then you have traffic backed up for the stoplights. Is that even gonna be feasible or is someone not gonna be able to get out of their house from seven to eight o'clock? Some of those things that I think some of the landowners are concerned about.
Yeah.
And that's part of why we couldn't do the third lane on the east leg of the intersection. I don't know if you noticed, but that's still the two lane because of that restriction that you're talking about. There just wasn't a way to not only work around the gas regulator, but not impact those driveways as well. So the way they've drawn it up is with the minimum amount of easement required, so...
So, I mean, I really, to give my blessing for this, I'm just saying this is just the beginning of the project and the relationship between the city and county and how we can actually make this happen finally.
Yep.
So...
We appreciate it.
Thank you for writing the grant. And I know it's very short notice with these sparks guns. And so we'll see. If we get it, it'll be great. It'll be great for the whole county, so...
If you guys do, if you guys do agree to the co-sponsorship, they wouldn't like it if you provide a letter just stating that, you know, you aren't supporting the project and you can agree to be the co-sponsor. And that way, it kinda helps solidify the application. Okay?
One thing I was concerned about, construction with everything closed down on 169, that is a main thoroughfare right now, so we're gonna show it all in Santa Fe for you guys is gonna be...
Yeah, we've got some major concerns with that because we were actually got approval to do a mill and overlay on Twenty First in Santa Fe, all the way to Thirty Fifth in Santa Fe. It was supposed to take place this summer. But Ford Estate did their project. I talked to Dale when we were at the state here a while back. And so that's been an ongoing conversation, something we're gonna have to look at as well, so... Yeah, there's, there's a lot going on right now.
These are good things though.
No, yeah, they're good.
I think, you know, I think we're progressing and so it's good to have these. So there's just gonna be a lot of, I think, back and forth between the city and the counties.
Yeah. Great.
Make a motion to support the grant application and a letter drafted, I have a letter drafted. In support. Second.
I'll second.
All those who are...
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Did, anything to add, William?
It's kind of a chicken and egg situation out there really. Because going east, you know, we kind of forget that, but that's as vital as the intersection itself. I'm one of those people, I've stood in the middle of that intersection and I know how hazardous that is. But the big drawback there is the landowners want city sewer along there so they can subdivide and do some things. Well, the city has resisted that. So that could give a little heartburn from certain key individuals in that direction. Going west on Twenty First, you know, there was talk at one time about the airport stretching further south and the whole road needs to move.
Right.
Do something, you know? And then, of course, it's always nice to not say much from Twenty First North to about Fifteenth or Sixteenth where they would be, because it's railroad crossing, which as long as you got a railroad crossing, you gotta have the full blown signals and like he's talking about there, you know, it adds a lot of money to the cost of doing business.
Bunch of money.
And I think the county, what is it, about five hundred feet maybe south of Fourteenth Street?
That's pretty close.
Where the county takes over and from there on up to Fourteenth is the city. So it's even kinda awkward right there. And I remember, oh, it's probably been twenty-five years ago, the county approved Plummer through that area. And there were residents on the east side that were going out their back fences and driving over to that one little road that comes off the southwest corner of the college to even get in and out of their houses for quite a while. So this is kind of a Band-Aid in the middle, but you gotta start somewhere.
Maybe to improve to that point too, you never know. Anyway, and I, when Jerry Williams was, we had the discussion of having the turnout lanes off of the highway on Twenty First Street, because that's still on the books. But that was owed to the county off that highway.
Yeah, it would be a smart pick.
Never opened up another annexation to go in and off the highway.
Yep. The other thing is when you get city involved, then you get to threaten the potential annexation of lands and like you said, if it's more than like twenty-one acres or something.
It's just twenty acres.
It's a scary number.
Yeah.
And that makes it really tough.
So, we'll see, we'll see if we get the grant.
Hopefully so.
Yeah.
I know, when in the project, when we talked about it from Thirty Fifth Street to from Fourteenth, we were gonna do the whole road, probably eight years ago. It was like six to eight million dollars, I think, for the whole roadway.
Yeah, you had some joint committee meetings and it was, I, the number of mine here was eight.
Eight, yeah.
They're gonna do bonds and then they came down and said, we won't do bonds for two entities.
Right.
Right? And so, I mean, are we gonna be in that same situation when we get down the road again?
I think you have the intersection out of the way of less than the project later too, you don't know.
I think that's a cheap part of the project.
No, I think it was like a, it was a million dollars on the utility move. Just, just the utility.
That's not counting the electric.
Yeah, the pole was a little...
But the electric on the, the last committee that I sat in on, which was probably about three years ago, the quote from the city electric guy was, if we had to move those poles on the east side of Plummer from Twenty First going south, you could be looking at five, five million dollars just to move them.
And there's the bridge also.
And the bridge to be replaced.
There's a gas line too, there too somewhere.
I think, yeah, it's right on the corner there.
Sure is.
That's that regulator.
Southeast.
The other thing, right at Twenty First is you have a drainage problem. And I think in their proposal, they were going to have inlets and, but that's all gonna come out somewhere.
Yeah.
And it's more water than traditionally had been directed to the same spot.
Okay, Bob's here.
Anybody else need water?
I'm thinking.
Colder, yeah.
Morning.
Afternoon.
Afternoon, yeah.
Sorry, Bob, I don't know where our podium went. I imagined District Court today last week.
Yeah.
Of course, I should be returning.
You're welcome.
This is important.
Only the best will be said.
So that was Scott. Okay, thanks, sir.
So we've put a motion on these NRP's? Well, have we been putting a motion on the NRP's or have we been a motion over this?
Yeah. If your motion was probably gonna approve it or not, then y'all, you know, just sign it. Heather?
Thank you.
Just one so far?
We have two today.
Okay. So, make a motion to approve the NRP plan for Scott, Wood and John. Their claims to new residence built?
I'll second that.
All those who are...
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We can, other than I need to sign for...
Question for recastings?
Farming's gonna have to get longer, we're gonna cut these boards down. Motion for NRP plan for recastings, new construction on South Plummer, is she in?
What's the two K?
I think it's...
All seven.
All those who are...
Two K.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Motion passes three zero. Like you said, the main construction.
Yeah.
Yes.
These are fairly nice homes.
Oh, yes. They're tiny, well, adult were there.
And then the other thing I had was Apex. Uh, we had a, immediately they, I had immediately Apex, and their concerns were, of course, the exemption, how it works, how it runs. And so I explained to them it's ten years from the time they built it. Then the other thing was on the white land, the sites, they would like to have the tax bill since then, but there's no way for us to split that out and send them just a tax bill for that part. So, uh, without the landowners splitting off that little piece, then we can send it to them in care. But then we require a survey and all, then take care of that for all one hundred and thirty-nine of them. So, and we reduced the sites to one acre. On, um, MSA maps, you can actually see all the turbine sites now. So you can go up there, there's circles, you know, circles, got an acre in size on each one of those, so. We've been reducing those in hearings over the last couple of weeks.
So when we originally sent the tax?
When we originally sent the, uh, the valuation notice out, it was for five acres. Because we couldn't get anybody to give us any information and Apex wouldn't give us any information, so we just put a five acre site and we figured we'd get somebody to call them. And we did.
What are, what are the other counties doing on the site, or where do they use?
They're using a one acre. But he gets that information until after we send those to them, but if I call, if I put a large enough one on there, somebody would call in and, and give me the information I needed, so.
And Bob, so the road going to the site?
Yeah, we don't pick that up, we don't pick up gas roads or roads that kind of the farmer puts in, so we don't pick any of those up. And a lot of those are being narrowed up, uh, so they're gonna be just, uh, a little road through there.
Okay.
So what are the other four acres? What are the other four acres?
Uh, it, it went back to, to, uh, crop or whatever it was.
Okay, okay.
I, I had a conversation with Bob, cause we were starting to get into legal battle and I wanted to make sure that came to us with decision where we're gonna go without there was appeals being made.
Yeah. So we've both have all of them fixed, but we have to, people have to call in before we can actually do anything. And we've been contacting some of them that we know, we can get phone numbers for, been calling them and asking if they wanna have a hearing on it. And that's worked pretty good, but we still got some that we don't know who to call or it's in some, uh, corporate name, so.
So if you got a windmill on your property, you gotta call, call you up.
Call me and you got till Thursday to do it.
Or pay at protest time.
Yeah. Which, if you're being reimbursed for the, for the five acres from Apex, can't see too many people calling in and wanting to protest.
True.
So. And then I got Ashbrook tomorrow.
But that's pretty well getting settled, right, it's the last?
I hope so. Um, we sent the appraisal, come out just over fifty million, uh, we'll have to, we had it redone. Uh, they're forty-seven, three, and we're at fifty-eight. So we only have a two point eight million difference.
So we're close.
So you think it's gonna be a little smoother than last time?
Yeah.
Okay.
See, I don't think we're gonna be in court like last time.
That's real fun. Make sure Gilmore knows about that.
Is that it?
Yep, I need copies of that one here. Send you copies, please?
Anything.
Is there anything else?
Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
Throw up ahead of her.
Is Lauren not here?
No.
No, she can't make it, she's dispatching to upset. So. Um, so I have several things, but I think we should just dive into it unfortunately, and we need to have clarity and figure out what we're doing for payroll. Um, at the last meeting, the motion was made that payroll was moving under, um, my department, and then there were some discrepancies from the payroll department currently in H R.
Jim, do you wanna come in here, please?
What those, uh, changes would be. And so, um, I'm just stating what the commission's expectations are, are we going backwards, are we going forwards? I'm just in a stop in place, I guess, with this.
I thought we were fairly clear that we moved forward under your department as far as payroll at that time and trying to get somebody hired temporary until we make sure we can fix all the problems that are going on right there.
Well, I'd like to say something here, um, I did not know that this was coming up at the last meeting. I emailed Heather and asked her what it was about on the agenda, and her reply was, another commissioner put it on there. So I had no idea what was coming, um, so I was totally caught off guard. Um, I thought that in January, we had talked and we had asked to look into a CPA helping us. I have not heard anything about that since then, so when she had this idea and when we brought it up, I really didn't have time to process it. Because that's not where I thought we were going, and then all of a sudden, we're going a different direction, um, so.
I'll state it that I, I mean, I've been looking at a six-month window to try to rectify, and we're still getting these tax statements and penalty statements.
Again, I didn't even get to look at the tax statements, whatever she brought, we weren't presented with that information, you may have seen it, and Paul may have seen it, I didn't see any information.
I seen it, I seen it from the time before, and then I got noticed that we're still getting it, and we wrote, written a check for eight thousand dollars to the state of Kansas, correct?
Recently, yeah, after the last meeting we've had, I've had to write a check for eight thousand dollars, a couple of penalties and interest.
The last meeting that we had?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I know, I know they have not settled what will be coming from there, as I can guarantee you.
So right now, the way we sit is, um, no other commissioner, um, had any more information than what would already have been presented in the past. And as far as the looking into a CPA doing it, Sydney and I were in an executive session and it was shared at that time of where we were at with that, with CPA, we, you could have that option. But also know you're double paying with that option, in essence, you're gonna have to have that CPA have C I C at their location, and if you don't, then you still have to have someone here that's still entering all the same information that the CPA is doing. And that's what we shared during that session at that time, was that, so I apologize if you were looking for something further, but at that time, my understanding, and I conferred with Sydney, that our understanding was that was kind of the nuke at that point. That it was up to you guys to, if you wanted to go farther with it, uh, that was up to you.
When I, I, I went in the assumption that we would try to keep it in-house under a short time, a six-month time, and make sure we can correct the situation. If that isn't, then we will have to go find someone to do it, and I, I've had talked to several CPAs, most of them, our group is a larger group, we're a hundred employees. It's a major deal, they would either hire staff, a full-time staff just to handle that, and you're gonna pay that salary to that CPA, so I'd like to keep it in-house, but at this point, I, we gotta get it right, I mean, we're months behind on filings and incorrect filings, and I just see a big fine coming from the IRS. I don't think I heard it.
Well, actually with IRS, we don't have a fine, rather, the county has overpaid close to thirty-eight thousand dollars in a credit that they're holding on to because of wrong filings done. And I haven't begin, cause when I started receiving Commissioner Clausen's emails, uh, that were very loud with her discomfort for me and wanting to help with payroll, I ceased all sort of development. I do have a full plate and I, I made that perfectly clear at the last time, but, um, and I did also express that a new hire would be necessary, um, and the commission agreed at that time with the help of Connie.
I don't think we agreed to that, I'm sorry, that wasn't part of the motion, that happened after the motion. And in the minutes that you presented for us to approve tonight, you said Commissioner Gilmore approved for you to hire. I'm sorry, he doesn't have the authority by himself to approve you to hire someone. That is the commission's decision, we didn't vote on that. And so when I see it add in the paper for something that we didn't approve, even though I know you brought it up, but by that time, I was really not comprehending everything that was going on because it just got thrown at me. Okay, so that's what I'm questioning as to exactly how we wanna head and how we're gonna handle this. I'd really, just rather go into executive session. I think let's start with the commission, and Seth, if we need anyone else, I would like to bring someone else in. We have not heard from Jim, Jim is the one that does these reports, as far as I know, you've never had a conversation with him, is that correct?
Other than the time when in audit that we sat here and they said it was gonna be rectified and it's not, didn't get rectified, other than we got a bill.
He didn't have a chance to speak his side of the story without first already being ambushed and saying that everything is wrong. I think it's, it would be profitable for us to hear his side of the story.
I'd always need to hear of his story.
And how much did we spend last year's audit with Rodney having to fix payroll last year? How many weeks was he there, ten?
In twenty nineteen, he was here, at least ten to twelve weeks.
Yep, yep. Okay.
This is where I'm going at with, I wanna correct.
I will make a motion to enter to executive session to discuss the job duties and performance of non-elected personnel and protect the rights to privacy of the individual employee. I'd like, uh, let's do twenty minutes, come back at, uh, three fifty with the commission and Mr. Jones and the option of having other staff and elected officials coming in if needed.
Can we have a five-minute recess with that?
Before, yes, so we'll come back at, um, three fifty-five.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
I'll be better.
Aye.
Kind of, I think they cleaned it up for us.
Got a few people in there, here.
About it?
Yep.
I had a new steer.
I did.
Yeah. Have you? Got a home to get?
It's a kid's steer. Yeah, Zoe said, Zoe said, that's my new kid's steer. She thinks it's a kid's steer, yeah. She thinks all over the world. Hi, hi, home, like, no, you can't.
Your boss is here. It's, uh, me. Dusty just probably called, or I talked to Dusty a little bit, so if he called and.
Okay, sure.
He just didn't think he'd be able to make it for your kids, it's gonna be hard out there. And here I am walking down the street and I see Bob, which I'm sure he talks to the commission.
Are you?
I'm good.
Hi.
Hey, guys.
Hello, Korea. I keep asking this, I keep forgetting this, what was the brand making model of voting machines?
Yes. Okay, that is third, so which machine, cause we have three different voting machines.
Oh, really?
You have the ballot counter, you have your express vote that they can vote on, or you have our poll pads that check people, and those are all considered voting machinery. They don't all count the votes, but it's all in that classification.
Well, I guess I'll give it all to you.
Of course, you will, okay.
Cause I know what I'm dealing with to begin with.
Okay.
What, 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 what I'm really getting at is, are they suing anybody?
No, not a machine, the company, I don't think so. Ours was, ours was not part of the, our machines that we chose to purchase at the beginning of twenty twenty, were not part of that conspiracy that was connected with the presidential.
I believe there was two brands that have filed defamation suits for that issue, and I wanted to be sure.
It's not ours, we did good.
We, we would have heard right away from the Secretary of State, they are right on top of telling us if there's any kind of security issue or whatnot, they called Heather immediately, so we've not gotten anything.
That's, I think what, I think that's what most people are not even curious about, is whether the new machines locally are likely to be involved in those lawsuits. Uh, I don't know, I don't think there would be any question about the vote outcome because this county is troubling the public anyway, so. Now, if, I put the, ah, if, if this county had voted for Biden, that would have raised some eyebrows, but.
So. Maybe, I don't know, I think there were a lot of surprises, we just, our state was very lucky that our counties did an amazing job throughout the state in taking care of our election. Okay.
I was just looking at the Wikipedia, and I think they have us down for supporting Republican candidate all the way back to Benjamin Harrison.
So how much faith do you put in Wikipedia, because that is not a reliable source you can use in college papers, believe me, they throw your paper out of the class.
That's, that's a good one.
I think.
I just put, put it this way, I trust them more than Facebook.
I trust a lot of things more than Facebook, right, I will go along with that for sure, for sure. Sounds like the state of Kansas.
It's just the state of Kansas.
The other one was the IRS.
The credit is with the IRS. Actually, actually, I, um, it's kind of matched sort of what I just went through this week, I sent in my personal taxes. And I get almost, it's not a bank from the federal government, cause I have to pay to visit my family.
Yeah.
And then, and then I've got the.
They've got that system work run well right now, Greg.
And then I've got the accountant bill on top of it. So, I was thinking, maybe if I didn't file a return and just tell them, who sorted it out between yourselves?
Just make sure that, yeah, just.
Keep it, figure it out between yourselves.
Yeah. They get quite a bit of that stuff from here.
Well, hello, are you? I'm alright, how are you?
Good.
We are here.
If, if, if Kansas are just thinking about the IRS.
Another time, yeah, I'm your fourth.
Right.
I'll be fast, you know, I'll be as fast as I can.
Listen, I can lay back for a minute, it's y'all that are stuck here.
Who else did you see about that?
Yes.
I should have asked, right?
I have two road purges, right? Okay. Better what's in here, that's mine.
It's gonna have some front end, it's two. I don't know, it's not a little bit. I don't know.
It's just a clear.
Tomorrow, this morning, we're supposed to be coming later.
Oh, my fans, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Uh, what's there for today? Wind's been slow as thirty.
Does it say like a, unless they're.
I don't know, last night here.
For your backside.
The tree's, I lost all of the bugs off of it last year. I'm sorry, I was off this year.
There's a lot of. So, I think I can, we'll see after with the kids, I figured I stopped. Then, yeah. I think she's struggling, cause I think she's just.
Yeah. Yeah.
She's been a little, she's just.
Yeah, that's crazy. Growing up, we had pear trees and apple trees. I don't remember, I never had to go out with the wheelbarrow and pick the, the tall tree and get rid of all the bad, the trash and flies and the bees and all.
All shorts, I said, you know? She's not playing basketball. You have to go all up and down.
Yeah.
Well, she's come up.
I was like, yeah.
I know it's amazing.
Oh, yeah.
She has a trauma case.
Super great.
Sounds like.
She's got another scar.
Sounds like a good.
Lazier.
Yeah.
Yep, so you're. Yeah. Yeah, like running years, yeah.
And then it's like.
Yeah, I go, there's lots of them, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's not something you just want all the time.
I don't know why they were, they were. I guess there was some kind of Asian hair, cause they were shaped for. Oh, yeah.
It's.
Who are you looking for?
Not here, Jim, okay.
About one year.
We come over this, this many pushers.
We have. Real parashim. And I'm probably gonna happen. And start growing. Too wild.
Yeah.
And then late. There was a. There was a whole thing last time. I didn't make it fit, but.
Got a really big.
We get it for the passport.
Ew. Ew.